Ready? I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Work session for January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call, please. Mr. Jameson.
Hall. Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cholka.
Here.
Layland.
Here. Item two is the budget work. Well, I'm sorry, I did forget the Pledge of Allegiance. So we could go on to that if some if those in the room would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The agenda received as proposed or amended.
Hello.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No oppose any opposed? No, we'll move on to item two, Budget Work Session. Discussion and consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year twenty-four Blackhawk County budget.
Good morning, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
We we are gonna start out with the presentation from Human Resources and I you all have the mater- excuse me, the materials emailed to you. I thought I would, whoops, um, put up the numbers quick here. See if I get the right one. Nope. Tried to open them all, but, okay. So I I will put these up just for a minute. Amanda, I don't, can you see the screen? Do you wanna just talk through your numbers?
Good morning. Um, I do have a brief PowerPoint just to, um, start and then, uh, which does explain, uh, the big, what I'm, you know, requesting for fiscal year twenty-four. Um, would it be all right if I went ahead and presented that and then we come back to this page?
Sure.
Okay. All right. And am I good to go ahead and share my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so good morning, everyone. Um, Amanda Fezemeyer, Blackhawk County Human Resources here to present, uh, the fiscal year twenty-four, uh, budget for the, uh, Human Resources Services. Um, and, uh, I'm going to just go ahead and, uh, go through these. It does connect with the, uh, budget information, the spreadsheet that Finance Director Michelle Wiener has provided. Um, but if we're ready to go, I'll just go ahead and and get going here. So. And then can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. So, um, couple of things here. What I'm gonna focus on in this presentation, as you can see, there's three areas, um, that I am proposing for the board to consider for the upcoming fiscal year with regards to our budget. Uh, the first item I'm gonna cover is the reorganization of, uh, our HR positions. Um, and then I'm gonna touch on, uh, enriching and enhancing our training budget, um, which will be applicable to a more, uh, broad audience with employees and management, uh, staff. And then last thing I'm gonna discuss is software implementation. I have an asterisk there because this is technically not part of the HR budget. It's actually a combination of IT as well as the self-insurance fund for, um, our medical dental, uh, insurance. So, uh, but I felt it was necessary to mention it here, um, and and to get your feedback. Okay. So, uh, two years ago, uh, when I was promoted to the board, um, or by the, when I was promoted by the board to the director position, um, I had, uh, indicated that I was gonna keep the same model, uh, that was in place. Um, I had served in the HR specialist role in recruitment and compensation, and there is the additional HR specialist role in benefits and leave, and then the HR director position. Um, so, uh, I wanted to give myself some time, um, what I had shared with the board, uh, a year or two before I recommended any position changes. And, um, I'm now here, you know, prepared to propose a different, uh, structure. So, um, this is just a historical overview of the, uh, various positions that our department has had over probably the past fifteen to twenty years. Some of you may recognize these titles and remember some of the staff that were in those roles. Um, just here to demonstrate that we've had kind of a wide range or wide variety of HR-specific positions. Um, as I have evaluated the, um, the workload and the workflow of the various HR activities that, uh, come across our office, um, I have been drawn more towards the HR generalist position to, uh, to serve in the HR office as opposed to the current setup, which is the HR specialist, uh, dedicated in in specific areas. So again, here's our current model. This has been in place since fiscal year seventeen, when I entered the HR department. Um, I currently have the same model. I have two, uh, very talented staff that, uh, are experts in their focus areas. And, um, they do carry out responsibilities in the specific functional areas that you see here. Uh, while this model has enabled them to be experts in those areas, it's also limited our ability to effectively cross-train and and really maximize their skill set in handling all aspects of HR functions. So what I would like to propose is bring back this generalist position, um, which is a more well-rounded HR professional role, um, as well as, uh, designate a senior HR generalist, um, to fall within the scope of the of the HR department. So this would, this would increase their scope, um, of their responsibilities, so that instead of focusing on one to two specific functions such as recruitment or benefits, they will function in all areas of HR. Um, that could be anything from recruitment, onboarding, benefits, pay, employee relations, training, performance management, investigations, policy, compliance. And, um, and I will, I'm proposing to divide their work by departments. We have done this before. Um, it's probably been, I think the last time I saw this setup was close to ten years ago, where we had two generalists in the HR office that, um, performing similar duties, but, uh, that were sharing or that were split up by departments. And, uh, what I would like, I, what I believe this model will do, it'll alleviate some of the backfill responsibilities for each of these roles, that roles that fall in the director right now. Um, it will also allow them to work more closely together and and step in for one another on a more regular basis. That will then free up some of my time to focus on the strategic HR areas and the director level responsibilities. The senior level generalist, um, that allows me to account for experience. I do have two very talented employees. Um, they differentiate in levels of experience. Um, one of my staff has about thirty years of experience, so, um, in in the HR field, um, at various levels of HR. So that senior designation would account for that experience. It also allows for a succession plan. And, um, some of the feedback I've gotten from board members is that I I need a, I should be designating someone as a second-in-command in the event that I would be unavailable for an extended period of time. So I feel that this model, um, achieves all of that. The senior level journalist would be responsible for larger, more complex departments. Uh, the other journalist would be the point of contact for the smaller departments that have similar job classifications and duties. So that is, I would say, when you look at my budget and when we get to the numbers, that definitely represents a fair share of the increase. Uh, what you don't see here, and one other thing that I'm proposing and will see in the actual Excel spreadsheet, um, is I'm also recommend for requesting a paid intern uh, for the next fiscal year to assist on special projects for our office. Um, I've been contacted in the past multiple times, uh, for student intern opportunities. Most recently, I had connected with Disa Cornish of the Board of Health, who, um, teaches in public health and education at University of Northern Iowa. We discussed opportunities that she and her colleagues are seeking for their students to gain professional experience with local organizations that allows them to, allows students to apply their knowledge and skills in alignment with educational goals, and I think could be, uh, beneficial to the county and to our office as well. Any questions about the reorganization?
Yeah, I got a couple. Uh, the interns, which you're talking about, I think we've used them over the years. Are they paid positions? Cause I know normally interns aren't paid.
You bet.
Part of their education.
So, okay, I can answer that or?
Okay, go ahead.
So, uh, I'm proposing it as paid, however, um, and that's one thing that I I've seen a mixture. Um, Disa, from what she explained to me is, uh, at U and I, they make sure that students understand that not all internships are paid, but they do encourage them to try to negotiate that or or seek out those opportunities, but, um, we could also entertain an unpaid, um, internship and and we could, you know, that would be, that could work as well. Um, I think we've had kind of a a wide range. Um, some are paid, some are unpaid. Um, but I'm open to to looking at an unpaid.
Amanda, I'd like-
I would, I would prefer to keep those as paid internships. Um, there's been a big kind of values shift in how people view interns, um, over the last ten years or so. And actually, a lot of negative feedback to places that that do have unpaid interns, and I think this is just the way to go.
This is Michelle, and I, we had been notified, I guess I'll say, in a former place that the rules for having unpaid interns are, have been changed, and so if you have an unpaid intern, you definitely can't have them do any work that a paid position would do. So it, it really limits, I think, what an intern can do now, and I I assume that is coming from fair labor standards, but I'm not sure the source of that. We would wanna check into that if we're going to try the unpaid route. It's just something they've changed recently.
Thank you. And and and, you know, what Disa had shared with me is that, you know, and the students, since they do encourage students to negotiate, and, um, I guess I kind of look at it as, well, um, you know, I want it to be a successful partnership and one that, uh, the student feels, you know, valued, um, that we feel that we, uh, you know, had a a good project, and I think, uh, a big motivating factor can be, you know, how your time is compensated, um, or or not. So, um.
Do you, do you know, Amanda, if this position is part of the course where they get the credit for it? Cause I know my daughter was three months in the jail, social worker, and she didn't get paid for it, but it was part of her continuing education. It was a requirement of the course.
Sure.
Is this part of, say, an intern that you would get? Is it part of their course? Or are you just hiring them on the off when they're not in school or what?
So, um, that would be, uh, I think it kind of depends on the program. Um, I know when I was going to the University of Northern Iowa, pursuing my, uh, bachelor's degree in business management, I did not have to do an internship, but I know that changed, um, several years ago, where they do have to do an internship. Um, so it would, it would kind of depend, I think, somewhat on the program and the college that they're attending. Um, much like what you said, uh, your daughter in social work, so, um, this is probably, I probably have more questions to ask. Um, my, right now, I've just established kind of a connection with, uh, Disa at U and I, specific to, uh, employee wellness and, um, kind of organizational wellness, uh, with their work in public health and and a, and health education. Um, but, uh, at this point, she said it it would be either one, that they do explain to their students that it may not be paid. Uh, but then I would think that they would be getting some sort of credit, uh, that would count towards their education. You know, to satisfy, uh, the value of that internship role.
Yeah, that's, that's really what I thought intern was. Uh, back to your first slide, um, the different titles for the HR director. What was the position, not only the individual, but the actual position classification the Board of Supervisors eliminated here a few years ago? I thought it was the manager.
Well, the director was eliminated, which led to the coordinator, and then the director was brought back. I think the manager, that was a retirement. I think it was, uh, Pam Silman, um, who actually was over quite a bit of safety.
I'm, I'm talking about the HR director at the time. That title that that individual is under, we eliminated that position completely and classification. And that individual was let go, and then eventually we gave a different title to another individual that was in the office.
Right, that would be the coordinate. So you could kind of say that coordinator and director, they weren't equivalent. I mean, they, that's what happened, that the director was eliminated, that person was laid off, and then the person that was the generalist got, um, the title of a coordinator. And then I think it was maybe a year or two after that to where that coordinator then was retitled and reclassified back to a director.
Okay, would you double-check on that for me? I'm curious, uh, what position, it wasn't the the individual I'm worried about, I'm more about the classification that the board actually eliminated. It didn't exist anymore in the county.
That's correct. So there was never a director and coordinator at the same time, if that helps answer your question.
Yeah, no, it was either, yeah, it was either manager or director. It wasn't coordinator. It was either the HR manager or the HR, one of those two were eliminated completely.
Okay, well, I know the director was definitely eliminated at one time. We didn't-
Okay.
That was definitely eliminated. Um, and then it was, and if, and if any other board members that can speak to that, I think Linda would probably be about the only one. But our records definitely show the director was eliminated.
I remember exactly what Tom's talking about and I, the individuals in those positions and how we did, um, change the titles of those. So, yep, that's right. You're both right on that. So whether or not it was whatever was called, we certainly did that, and the person, uh, left our employment. And we changed titles, um, then too, and like you said, someone was promoted, I guess, to that position later.
Yeah.
Uh, and, yeah, so.
Um, the other question I had too, you know, you talked about shifted duties to this individual and that. Um, who's currently doing those duties?
So they're currently.
I mean, you're, it looks like you're adding more to one individual than the other, but who's actually doing these duties now?
Well, one of them only does benefits and leave, and the other only does recruitment and compensation, and then I pretty much backfill the areas that, like, they're not regularly doing, they're only doing specific things. So instead of splitting them across functions, I want them to be able to to do all aspects, benefits, leave, recruitment, compensation, um, to assist all the departments, uh, but be kind of split up by departments and backfill for each other. For example, recruiting has been extremely high for us the last couple of years.
Sure.
So, um, I could have probably pulled the benefits and leave person in and said, hey, you're gonna support the departments, but instead I've kind of taken that because it, I'm not comfortable, I guess, telling them to do more work when their job classification and job description and compensation pretty much align with a very specific function. And and if I have the generalist, they can, they can start to, uh, fulfill all aspects of our HR activities, um, and and work more hand in hand together. They work well in that they both do new hire orientation, they both conduct the exit interviews, they both, uh, assist with, you know, contract negotiations and areas like that, but they're very limited in right now that they're just specific to their functional areas, and I, it's been a good model for, since they were both brand new to the organization. Um, they both started on the same day. They become very, uh, like, they have a lot of expertise in those areas. Uh, but I need, I want to maximize their skill set, and I want them to be able to, anybody that comes through the door, they can, you know, serve them, whether it's employee or manager on any topics, but that really would be a generalist level.
Sure. So in other words, so in other words, there's no really new duties. You're just kind of mixing them up between the two. So they're more versatile, so that one can overlap the other.
Yeah, versatile's a good word. I, yes, that's correct. I'm just, and I, I don't think I can do that with their current job descriptions and classifications. I just don't feel right because it's very specific where they operate in now. And and that, so that's been my thing over the last two years. I knew I was gonna come back with something. Um, I think the generalist is more reflective of the level of work they do. And what allows them to be in the specialist is that they're in specific areas, so they, I don't utilize them fully, but a generalist truly is an HR professional that can step in and handle all aspects, um, of of various HR activities, so.
Okay. Could you send the board a, uh, copy of their current job classification, job duties as a generals, and then a copy of the new one that you're proposing?
Sure.
So we could compare the two on the duties and what's the difference and so forth?
Yep. Yeah, so we, I can send those, uh, out. So you're gonna see that the generalist, the proposed ones are gonna look very similar. What's gonna differentiate a senior from the HR generalist is that, um, they'll be more of that second-in-command and responsible such as, you know, with things such as program analysis, training, development, and possible, and then also like investigations and complaints. Um, the other HR journalists would still participate in those with that area, but I would expect the senior generalist to take the lead on some of those areas, um, in times when we need that, cause right now it's, it's pretty much just me.
Okay, so they're, okay, so they're actually gonna take some of the duties from you and add more of it to the two employees?
Well, I would, I think it's best that I have, um, you know, I'd, I'd like that they could be able to step in, um,
Sure.
and handle like an investigation. If an employee comes in and makes a complaint, they don't have to wait for the director. You know, and and not that they, they have been able to handle some of those things, but but I think it would be more linear if I had this other model.
Sure.
Yeah.
But they're not, they're not doing that currently.
No, uh, no, they're not necessarily, no, they're not, they're definitely not leading investigations. They're not, um, they're kind of that initial contact, and then they notify me, and then, and then I go from there.
Yeah. No, I've always been a strong proponent over the years for all the departments. The board has always stressed on what we called cross-training. Um, I just, you know, I'm a little unsure if you need to be changing classifications, uh, why you can't cross-train, but again, um, you've explained it, but, uh, we've always pushed cross-train. It just makes good sense for, for a department head leader to do that. And, but I just don't, I'm not sure yet why we have to change classifications to do cross-training training.
Well, I think it kind of comes down to that, um, I want them, I, I want them on a more regular basis to be, uh, servicing in all areas of HR. And, um, again, the specialist, right now, the generalist, that's what it is classified as a GS seventeen. That's what it's always been classified. There's the specialist, these ones, and specific areas dropped it down to a GS fifteen because they're really only focusing in limited areas. Their scope isn't as broad. So while they've been able to backfill to a certain degree, um, you know, with just keeping things afloat, they're not as effective if they would actually be doing the roles on a more regular basis and it just be dedicated to certain departments. So like if, if, for example, the senior HR journalist was responsible for the sheriff's office and, uh, health department and conservation, those departments would seek out that contact for any HR needs. And then the other generalist could support auditor, recorder, VA, IT, treasurer, and they would be the primary contact for any HR needs. So that would really enhance the cross-training because they're actually doing the work on a more regular basis. Right now, they're doing their jobs, but only in their specified areas. And so I do feel like my time is often split up more on kind of the backfill for both of them, as opposed to really maximizing them to be the backfill for one another, um, just because of the way that the jobs are aligned currently.
Okay, and I appreciate that because I was gonna say my add-on to Tom's question was really gonna be when you talked about the the departments, both working with departments. I wondered if it was gonna be on the number of departments or size of departments or how you were making that distinction, so.
Sure, so.
Address that.
Yeah, and and this is kind of, I, I'm kind of using, well, again, we did have this setup in originally, we had two generalists at one point, and they did split up the departments evenly. I have tried to establish, or I'm proposing this senior HR generalist. Um, this is kind of a model that I actually had when I worked at Deere in budgeting. Um, I was a budget analyst, and I, there was a senior budget analyst, and, uh, they had, they had smaller, or I'm sorry, they had less, um, I guess, budgets, but they were massive, very complex, um, a little bit more demanding. And so then, and then I handled a lot more budgets, but they were much smaller uh, amounts. And so I'm kind of using that same model here that, again, I wanna have a progression. I think that's important to establish in our department, some kind of succession plan, career growth. And I think I can do it with dividing the departments to a specific HR contact, but again, the generalist being at similar, um, smaller departments, similar job classifications and operations. Um, and then the senior generalist taking on a little bit more complex, a little bit larger, um, departments that um, may have a broader range of needs.
Thank you. Do anyone others have comments or questions? I was gonna say, I just had one, or comment I wanted to add to, and it really was kind of related to your internships. I know, um, we'll look at the numbers and and see what's all budgeted, and then overall, we'll look at our overall budget at the end, but I I'd like to see them remain for now as paid internship. You know, the workforce has changed so much in the last few years, and particularly in the last couple, and internships have as well as employers and others look at, um, using them to the benefits and advantages of businesses and and I just think too, for the students and that we would engage with that, it would be at least important to at least have that still budgeted if we can benefit by that or at least have that option.
I just wanna make sure that we follow the guidelines that Michelle had just laid out as far as doing work of others.
Yes.
Uh, that's important. Uh, I still, I, I don't have a problem paying interns because we've done it before. Uh, I may have a concern if that intern is actually part of their course where they're receiving a credit. Uh, that part I don't know about paying them because I know of a lot of other people who have been in college situations where they've done interns and they haven't gotten paid because it was actually part of their, uh, credit to receive, so I don't know. That's something to think about.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions, um, about the reorganization? I will make a note to send out the job descriptions. And, um, I think that was the only thing requested.
Are they both an increase, Amanda, in?
Right, because they're both, they're both GS fifteens, and so it would be a, going to a GS seventeen because that's what the generalist has been, that's what our, uh, it's been classified as. And then it would be, which is, um, about a, you know, that's a ten percent jump um, between classifications, and then I would put the senior HR generalist at, um, at, uh, the GS eighteen. So that, that is going to, it is an increase that I'm, you know, requesting. Um, I had also toyed around with the idea of asking for just an additional FTE. Um, but I know that really expands the budget. And I would like to give my staff the opportunity. I I do believe in this model. And I, they've really, you know, performed outstanding. I have wonderful comments and feedback from departments. Um, and I think I'd like to just give them the opportunity to uh, grow as well as like better meet, you know, our department's needs as well as the other departments and employees before bringing anyone else, or before proposing bringing anyone else in.
And just, is this just a sidebar to the information you're gonna be providing us, Amanda? When you provide those two positions, I guess, i- if you could just, like, say the increase, obviously, that you're talking about, but maybe highlight in the, um, new position created, kind of what is different, so it's for us to recognize and not have to read through and try to determine what the change is. That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I can do that and and just, um, you know, it's pretty, it, it really will look like you're gonna see the two positions and they're designated areas, and it's just gonna, they're gonna be aligned into one. I mean, so, if that makes sense. Um, so, so that's the kind of stuff you're gonna see is that, in the generalist, you're gonna see it's gonna include recruitment, onboarding, selection, benefits, accommodation, FMLA, other leaves, so. Um, but yes, I can certainly kind of highlight. But, but just for your guys' understanding, it just basically aligns them under one kind of job description.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. That, those responsibilities all fund, fall under the one generalist role. Okay, um, moving on. Next thing is a training request, so this is another large, um, increase. Um, I think it's about, uh, thirteen thousand dollars more than what I originally asked for. Our training budget, um, each fiscal year has been about seven thousand dollars, and that covers, um, that's for the HR staff, myself, and then also any training offerings we can provide to, like, on a more broad basis, like the all-county staff at desk. So, um, we use the dollars for continuing education, webinars, certifications, employment conferences, and then, um, it's also been used to bring in speakers, um, and to offer additional resources to departments and at various levels, um, of employment. Training is an important part of employee development, and department heads and elected officials, um, have been requesting more training opportunities for professional development, team building, conflict resolution, and specifically in management and leadership development. So, um, I am seeking an increase of thirteen thousand dollars to support the following training programs. I've kind of broken it out here, so it would, my, the training budget would go from seven thousand to twenty thousand. Um, you can see here, employee professional development, um, the last couple of years with COVID, uh, that dramatically affected our ability to bring in speakers for large groups of people, but we're at a point right now where, um, you know, we're moving, trying to get that back on track. Um, but speakers also aren't, uh, cheap. Sometimes we can use, um, some of our um, partners with like IMWCA, uh, PDCM, uh, others that have, you know, trainers or speakers that are available at no cost, just through our partnerships, um, and we've been relying on those, especially with our, um, our safety, our need for, uh, kind of changing our safety culture here the last couple of years. Um, but now I'm wanting to really kind of shift into professional development, which does, um, usually, those don't come for free, so. Uh, the next area here is leadership development programs, so this is to support training needs for department leadership or supervisory roles. Um, it could be possibly even extended, you know, to staff that are looking to, um, gain leadership experience or looking to move into a leadership role as part of their career here at the county. Um, but there's specific leadership subject areas to understand concepts and skills that can be implemented in the workplace. I've identified a cup, identified a couple of programs, um, Kirkwood Community College has a Leadership Academy uh, program, and then, uh, Hawkeye Community College, College has a LEED, um, certificate program. Um, this eight thousand to ten thousand dollar budget that, um, allows a limited number of people to be able to attend those, uh, because they range from about nine hundred and fifty dollars to twelve hundred dollars per person to attend. Um, and, uh, but that's, it, the various courses that they offer really kind of, uh, allow for a broad foundational knowledge and understanding and, and concepts when it comes to, um, managing people, which is a very, uh, you know, we have managers in, in all departments and, um, and it varies in people's, you know, skills levels for what they bring to the table. Um, next thing is HR team training, so that could be anywhere from five to seven thousand, um, to support continuing education. Some of the specific conferences, I have yet to actually go to a national conference, but I plan to go to one this year, and that does eat into quite a bit of the budget, um, to attend those. And then required training. So we have a new hire orientation, and I'm also proposing a mandatory refresher training. Um, we use Cantola, which is the platform for our training videos. Uh, like many other media production companies, they have gone to subscription-based, um, where you actually log in and view an online tutorial uh, for these various trainings, as opposed to having DVDs. So we're looking to modernize and update those, and, um, we actually are, uh, we picked off kind of the mandatory refresher training. The department heads have been made aware that that's coming to the employees this, um, in the, in the next couple of weeks, and we have been able to, you know, work with that budget there. Uh, but for next year, I'd like the new hire orientation, which we roughly, I think last year we had about seventy-seven new hires that went through our orientation, and, uh, wanting them to then be able to utilize and, and, um, train on these areas, uh, through Cantola's online training platform. And then every three, three years, I would recommend that we have a mandatory refresher on the topics of diversity, equity, inclusion, bullying, respect in the workplace, harassment prevention for the employee, harassment prevention for the supervisor, and then drug-free workplace.
Amanda, question, um, I've always wondered, when we've had these programs, whether you bring in guest speakers or whatever, how does an employee attend it? I mean, is it off-hours? Is it during work hours? I mean, how, how does an employee actually attend something like this?
Well, we've had to get creative. Um, we've used, uh, the range, uh, to offer multiple sessions, because we have to continue operations in almost all of our offices, so it's not like you can close down an office and just go attend a training. So, um, you know, we brought in speakers to, um, they've had maybe like a two, a morning session and an afternoon session over two days. And that way, we try to get as many people into, um, into those training sessions. Um, we've also done it out at Hartman after their remodel. Um, we had one with a speaker back when Debbie was the director. And it was a, a great opportunity for employees to kind of break away. They got to, you know, pick which ones they wanted to go to with their supervisor's approval. Um, and, uh, and again, it's, it's voluntary, um, but highly encouraged, but just a way for people to kind of reset and expand their competencies and skills, um, in an area for, for their own professional development, but, um, the courthouse doesn't have the best space to be able to do that, so we have relied on the range, as well as, uh, the health department at times and, and Hartman.
How do, if an employee, if you had something like that, obviously, it's during working hours, how do they get there? They drive their own vehicles?
Uh, in the past, yes, that's what they've done.
Do we, uh, can we track it for attendance? What's the, uh,
Mm-hmm.
That attends something that you have like this?
Well, I'd have to go back and look at the, but again, it was very positively received, um, when we had the professional development with Brenda Clark-Hamilton out at Hartman Reserve, and there is, uh, she had customer service, emotional intelligence, um, generations in the workplace. She had a leadership toolbox one, and, um, and they were, you know, I, not every staff member attended. Um, and, you know, that's one thing to kind of work out with some of our um, groups that, especially if you're like out at Secondary Roads, they kind of need a more designated time and place where they could bring in a speaker all at once, so we try to work with their, when their downtimes are to do, um, to have some of their training, um, occur at those points. Um, but we definitely have a lot of, uh, um, staff throughout the courthouse that would be able to attend this in different sessions, if it's offered in multiple sessions.
Sure. I, I would think the department heads themselves would be more responsible for this, because they all have their different peak periods. Uh, example, the treasurer's office has that period twice a year of a month each of taxes where they're busy, so obviously, it's pretty hard to attend. Recorder's office has that period of, uh, renewal boat license and so forth. So, I think it really has to be coordinated in between the departments, that if you're gonna have some program today, that it isn't conflicting with one or two or more departments that basically can't send anybody because of the, the workload that they have at those times.
Right, and that's, and yeah, and that's, you know, being able to offer more than just one speaker once a year is what I'd like to get to, um, and to possibly work more closely with. For example, there's a, a presenter I'm, uh, I've been in contact with about, it's a, a DISC assessment. It's about personalities and how your personality and, and recognizing others' personalities and how we all work in the same place and need to be aware and mindful of how we work. Um, I think that would be a great one, uh, for all staff and not just, you know, management, but uh, we'd want to make sure and have it, uh, scheduled in such a way that accounted for, uh, you know, the, the demands of all the different offices, which can be difficult, but I think if I have a little bit more wiggle room, I can offer it twice a year as opposed to just once. Um, and in twice, I could have, you know, two days of it, and there'd be multiple sessions and, um,
I know a lot of, I know a lot of programs that I attended at Deere's were programs that were designed for online. And, um, an employee could take them whenever they had an opportunity, but at the same time, it would show that they attended it and completed this course. And, uh, maybe something like that would work, would work well with our employees. And it was various subjects, um, workforce harassment and so forth, so.
And that, um, is, that's what the, the required training, that's what we are rolling out right now, or started to roll out, and it is online, and you have basically six months to complete two hours of online work. So we have been working with, you know, some departments like Secondary Roads, they don't have computers, so we've had to set aside time to say, okay, we're gonna come and show the tutorial to all of you, um, during one of their staff meetings. Um, but for majority of our staff that work on computers and there is some time, um, you know, in working with the departments, they all understand the importance of diversity, equity, inclusion, bullying and respect, harassment prevention, and also drug-free workplace, that, um, you know, they're able to make time for that, uh, for their staff to attend those um, online tutorials right at their desk.
Okay.
So that's all, that's, it's kind of a combination, and, and that's what I thought with seven thousand dollars, it does make it a little tough. Um, you know, I'm, but I'm open to feedback. And I think, um, you know, whether we get it done at the department level or through HR, I'm just trying to offer a more consistent, um, training program that can be applied more widely, um, which does require, you know, research and understanding and, and taking, taking a lot into account, so.
Your current budget, you said seven thousand dollars?
Yep.
Michelle, Michelle, do you know how much is left of this current year, seven months in?
I think it's five thousand.
And that, that would only be through December, but so for the first six months, um, we haven't used a great deal of it yet.
Okay.
And so I would like to go to a national, that's one thing I've kind of, like last year, I think I used about nine thousand, a little over. Um, but this year, I would like to go to a national conference, but that's gonna be at least two thousand, possibly twenty-five hundred or more. So, and, and previous HR directors, you know, went to those, and I, I do think they're very beneficial. It's put on by the National Public, um, uh, Employer Labor Relations Board. So, but I do, I mean, we, we want to make sure and utilize the training dollars if we're, if we're given those, and I think we can, we can do that, especially with, uh, these leadership development programs as well.
Yeah, no, I, I do think this is an important area to expand, so I appreciate, um, your efforts here, and definitely, um, anything we, if, if we can really turn this into, um, a kind of permanent, um, kind of structure of continuing education for our employees, like that's what, that's what we need, and we get that, that feedback all the time, and, and, and we emphasize that all the time, too.
Yes, I, I'd like to add to that as well. I, I was gonna say, I love looking at the different training requests, and I appreciate the presentation that you've identified the different roles, but I know one particular one that, um, always I, I think about is that leadership development. Um, I'd like the fact that the county has advancement opportunities for our staff, and that they recognize and see that there's opportunity for them to grow into the positions, and we can retain um, them, uh, as excellent staff, but I thought many times, you know, you have the people who know the job very well, and and some of them have been with us for years, some have not, but they still, they understand it, but still, when you get put into that supervisory role, it's a different skill set. The management of people is important, and even helping them be successful in, in that role, so. I really like that leadership development, even above and the others, but
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate all of them, so thank you.
Yeah, and it would, you know, we still have things internally that I would like, I mean, it, it's been a busy year, past couple of years, but we're really at a point with my team where they're very oriented, you know, with all the areas of the county. We're really looking at trying to actually offer like a quarterly kind of management one-on-one training for whether you're a new manager or you're, you've been here and you just need some, you know, a refresher. Um, we've had a lot of individual requests. I've done one training out at the Health Department, um, Performance Management, and we did use, um, the NeoLearn platform, which has a lot of online tutorials, um, for managers and supervisory staff. Um, and that's actually, we have that only because it's, because IMWCA, um, their online university moved to NeoLearn. Um, but it's been a, a great tool when we had to do some remedial training, or we've had, so uh, I feel like this leadership development kind of supplements that, but also gets people out and speaking with experts in leadership and management development. Um, and, uh, and so that's, that's where I see this going. Um, and, and again, it, it is limited. There's only so many spots that you can have in these programs, so not every manager, um, you know, will be able to attend in one year. We will have to kind of sort through that. Um, but, you know, working with the departments, I'd, I'd like to at least start something that we can start to, uh, get people on a schedule, so that if they're not able to do it next fiscal year, they could be on the list for fiscal year twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-six, and so on and so forth.
Great, yeah, thanks very much.
Um, okay. Last thing, then, software implementation. Okay. So again, these are not part of my budget, but they are, um, they impact a budget somewhere, so I want to discuss them. Um, the first one is a benefit and onboarding enrollment, um, uh, software. And then the second one I want to touch on is just our applicant tracking module, known as Civic HR. Um, so, we, uh, actually, I'm gonna skip this slide here, so, uh, our benefit consultants perspective, uh, they introduced an option, um, as part of our upcoming insurance renewal, uh, to have a benefit and onboarding enrollment platform, an online one, a mobile, um, platform that employees can access their benefits and onboarding information from anywhere at any time. Uh, we have a very manual process right now that involves the department that's hiring, or the department of the employee, HR, and payroll. Um, for example, a new hire, when they get their first day paperwork, um, it is all, you know, it's very heavy in the type of paper and the, and the processing that we have to do. Um, and, uh, they, then, when they select their benefits, a new hire orientation, again, it's, uh, they fill out a piece of paper, they repeat the same fields of information that they already had, um, done on the application, and, um, or that they did on their I-nine, and now they're doing it again on their benefit enrollment form. And then, uh, our staff go in and enter their information and all their dependents' information into three to four different websites, provider websites, depending on what they've elected. So, um, this, you know, again, it's something that I'd like us to explore. Um, it, it will come up at renewal. Um, I'm bringing it up now, just because in order to, if the board is interested in moving in something like this, um, so in order to be prepared for open enrollment in May, there's some legwork we'd have to do right now, and, and an agreement that I would like, or some kind of approval from the board to move forward. Um, you can see here, uh, it really just streamlines the HR and benefits administration. Um, and it's, uh, allows us to have, uh, digital enrollment forms where the employees can complete. Once those are submitted, reviewed by HR, they get communicated to our health insurance provider, uh, our pharmacy provider, dental provider, uh, EBC, flux provider, um, and then, uh, life insurance as well. So, um, it's something I wanted to at least offer, and then with, and then with the payroll side, too. Uh, the employees can see exactly what their deductions are. It's kind of like a shopping cart, so I want to select this. So I want to select this plan, the buy-up plan or the basic plan or the 500 plan, the 750, what does vision look like? And they're able to have a lot more accessibility to do that, you know, with their spouse or with their partner or with their child or, or whomever they need to kind of include in those decisions. And then of course, when we have qualifying events where people need to make changes, this would also enhance that our ability to be, you know, it'd be more accessible. You don't have to physically come in and handwrite out a form. And, and I'm just, I just want to present it to you all as a, for consideration and see if there's really, you know, any interest in moving towards something like that. But there is a cost.
Is there a cost involved?
There, it always is.
How much?
Well, here's my slide for this. So this is what is just an estimated cost at 400 benefit eligible employees. We don't, I think we have closer to 350, need to double check that. But this was just the initial draft of the estimate. And then this would come out of, this would be like any other administrative fee tied to our self-insurance fund. So this, you can see there for the initial year, it'd be $23,660. It comes down to about $3.45 per employee per month is how they bill it, similar to other administration fees. And then following that, it would be 20,000. So there is definitely a cost to this. Right now, with us processing this, you know, like I said, we enter the information in, the same information, the employees entering the same information multiple times. I do believe there's, there will be a cost savings or certainly a more productive use of our time as well as payroll's time. If we can enhance that experience for the employee as well as increase our effectiveness. But it was brought to me and to that group of us that look at the insurance fund and so I'm bringing it here as a, something for you all to be made aware of and, and looking for some direction.
This will come out of the insurance fund, you're saying?
Correct.
Is this something that maybe should go in front of the insurance committee or no?
Well, so it's not the liability insurance.
Yeah, it's the health you're talking about, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so we had a meeting with, our group is with, we have Stacy, who's a consultant, and then we have Tim from Auditors, Michelle, obviously Finance Director, and then myself and Cherry in the benefits area. So that's where this was initially brought. We did watch a demo. I had payroll in the auditor's office, watched a demo because they really are impacted by this as well. And, and received positive feedback. We have one other specialist though that needs to see the demo that we're hopefully going to get that done here yet this month. But, you know, again, it, so I guess for, at this point, I'm, it's really more to kind of go, I guess I'm looking to bring it to you all as an option.
And this is an annual cost?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I, I think it somewhat could be a great idea and probably has some good ideas and things that our employees can use. The only problem I have with this, this is the first time I'm hearing about it. And I can't speak for the other board members, but this board's been getting bombarded with dollar request. And they have to be done right now. And I can think of three of them off the top of my head. Now here's number four. And, you know, we're asked, you got to approve this right now. And so in this case here, this will have to be approved in two or three weeks when we finish up budgets. So I, I would like to research it more. I'm not saying it's a good idea or a bad idea, but I'm kind of getting tired of the way the board's been getting thrown at a lot of this cost. And, and its cost is really going to make a difference on our bottom line when it comes to taxes. So again, it's, it's probably something that should be looked at, but I can't tell you one way or the other right now.
And that's fine. I didn't want you guys the first time to see this though at the renewal. And you guys, we get through budget and it's like, well, you never discussed this. So, you know, it's not, what I mean by, I guess, approval, I don't necessarily, if, if there's interest in doing this though at all and expla, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily have to be done for open enrollment. I'm just letting you all know, open enrollment isn't made. We don't have to do open enrollment under this platform. We could hold off and say, give you guys some time. You are going to see this again likely at renewal unless it's just totally shut down, which is fine. I just didn't want to be the decision maker. For me and the rest of us, we felt like, well, it's being brought to us by the consultants. I think there is some value certainly in it. And, and really just, you know, giving it to the board and, and making you all aware of it and to kind of ask questions and, and understand, you know, the cost. But I didn't want to get to renewal in May and say, well, oh, by the way, here's this extra administrative fee and when I could have told you right now, because we really only found out about it last month. It was our demo and I wasn't prepared to really bring it to you all until I've, you know, sat down with Stacy and saw the demo and, and understood it more, but. But no, I'm not asking necessarily for a decision. It's just that, you know, there are some timelines, but if, if it's, even if it's approved and it's not in time for open enrollment, that's fine. Well, we can still begin at July 1 and we can just start with new hires and start with when there's a qualifying event.
Is this through, is this through perspective?
Right, yeah, they're our broker. And it's a, a platform that they've been, other of their clients have started to, to utilize more, but it would probably be better at the time of renewal, you guys will get a much better idea of what our renewal is. Because right now we can't predict that. You know, we're kind of just estimating what we need for the insurance fund, but and then that way you guys would have a better idea of what, you know, is this cost going to be dramatic for that fund? Or is it going to be, you know, more easily absorbed?
Yeah, but I mean, this is directly tied to perspective.
No, it's not. Perspective is not doing, no, they're not.
Okay.
It's, it's a separate entity that, that they're offering to their clients to streamline this whole benefit enrollment, because like I said, we, we go and log into a VCS, Preferred One, EBC, we go in and we, and we, you know, upload the same information three to four times of a family of one or a family of four. And, and so it is a bit time consuming and, and we just wanted to bring it forward to get your, your input.
It does look, it does look like that there could be a, a lot of hours inefficiencies made, you know, across both your department and the auditor's office. So as like when, as we debate the cost of, of this, I don't know if you would be able to, between the two departments, maybe come up with an estimate of, of, of hours that this might save.
Sure.
Annually. And I guess you, I mean, you could also, I'm also thinking about, you know, employees, you know, have some kind of life-changing, you know, event or qualifying event coming in, you know, also taking work time, you know, to come into the HR office to do something that could be pretty simple. So, so it just, I mean, it seems like maybe we may come for the, for the cost possibly there.
We could, I think so. And, and we can certainly get that. I'll work with the payroll team. They, and we can, they've actually done time studies and, because they, before HR did this work, they actually uploaded all the employees' information in the benefit systems and then also did the deductions. So yes, I think between, I can certainly work with them to get kind of a, an idea. And, and I do want to mention, you know, with new hires or even existing employees, sometimes there are qualifying events that are very sensitive that to have to come in and tell someone that you're getting divorced is, you know, not always, not everybody's comfortable doing that, but it's something that has to be done in order for our benefits to be in compliance with our coverage or other changes that may be, you know, some people, everybody has different things that may occur that can impact their insurance. And so I think having a platform that one allows them more accessibility and, and kind of also a way for them to report this information without having to come face the HR team, you know, for some of those circumstances, I think.
And I was going to ask Dan if he had any thoughts or good, bad or indifferent?
Nope, I'm absorbing it.
Okay, yes, I think we all are. Well, and it sounded like Amanda, you were really kind of not saying a yes or no from the board. You didn't want the decision necessarily made today, but just if it was worth pursuing and we think that there's enough of us that say, yeah, we'd like more information about it or to continue to work with us and providing that. Sounds like, that sounds like there is.
Yeah, and I would say, yeah, you know, when Stacy, she said, if we really wanted to roll it out for open enrollment, we would kind of need to have our ducks in a row there. But again, that's not, and that's not an immediate need. If, if we prefer to just, you know, collect the information on like what Chris was asking for, you know, our time being spent in, on these tasks and payroll's time. And then also wait until that renewal comes in to really see the impact of this cost. That's fine. And, and, and it can, if it's approved at that point, we start July 1. If, if it's not, then we just continue our process the way it is currently, so.
I, I do wonder, I mean, you know, if, if the new, if we did switch over to this and all of a sudden there, there are headaches, maybe it's easier to kind of do a, a soft ongoing that is just like with the new hires and such. I'm not sure if there's, if there is concern about how the transition would go.
That's, that's actually probably a really good point. Open enrollment might be a little aggressive anyways with it affecting all employees. So I would, I would agree with you that, you know, kind of starting at that July 1 where it's just really the new hires, the qualifying events to kind of work out some of the kinks that inevitably will happen, so. Okay, and then the last thing, I mentioned applicant tracking module. I don't have a lot of information on this, but it's more a heads up that we were notified recently, like within the last week or two, that Civic HR is sunsetting, I guess, that applicant tracking module. And Al and I have been, and Anna have been having discussions. It sounds like a company called Criterion either purchased it or is assuming that. And they kind of put us on notice that end of September, we have to kind of work out what we're going to do and how much their support they're going to provide for this platform. But eventually it is going away. This houses all of our applicant information. It is our online application process. And so we're just in the beginning stages of really understanding what that means and, and whether Criterion will be a viable option for online applicant tracking. I will tell you that most public entities, I'm, see, whether it's schools, cities, counties, even in the state, they go to NeoGov. I believe we evaluated, NeoGov was evaluated many years ago when we first entertained having an online applicant tracking module. They are generally more expensive, but they are probably the leader in public sector applicant tracking as well as recruit, recruiting for people looking to get into public service. So I would like to have a demo with them and get a cost estimate, but I just wanted to let you know that this is, I don't have a budget for it. It is budgeted, I believe, out of IT. Al is not going to have an idea exactly what that's going to look like, but we were put on notice that it's changing. So more information to come.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation, which went longer than I thought. I'm going to stop sharing. And then I'll let, Michelle, do you want to go to the spreadsheet?
We can do that. See if I get the right one this time. Whoops. I don't know where that came from. Okay. Okay, yeah. So I don't know why you're not getting my screen right now. Amanda, did you stop share?
Yeah, I can see your team's chat. It might just be on the wrong window. Otherwise I could pull it up too, I think. If you want to stop sharing and I could try and, oh, there it is.
Now, I don't know why that happened. But I do, yeah, my screen is being hard for me to look at right now, so. But you can see it on the board. Obviously, HR is not really a revenue generating department. And Amanda, can you see it? Do you want to talk?
Sure.
One thing I want to, I want to point out to the board that's different on this version is that I've included two columns in Amanda's presentation for FY24. You'll see a column that's called Initial Draft and that keeps the staffing the same as it is today. So the only difference between the FY24 requested column and the drafts column are the changes in personnel that are being requested. And I will be using that approach if other departments have personnel requests as well. I thought the board might prefer to see those separately from what I would call line item changes. For example, the additional training budget that Amanda's requesting.
Thank you. Yep. And so, so yeah, revenues. Last year, we had talked about doing a grant through IMWCA for like a slip and fall prevention where winter weather shoes would be purchased. That got pushed off with the safety coordinator coming on board and I didn't necessarily think his first task should be, you know, heading up winter weather shoes. So, but that's being reduced out of here because that's actually going under maintenance now because it really is a safety initiative. Salaries and benefits. So like Michelle said, there was the initial draft. We were going to experience about an 8% increase with keeping everything status quo. So that would be accounting for that 3% across the board and then the merit increases for myself and the two specialists. Then you see the fiscal year 24 requested. That includes the intern, about $15 an hour for six months. It also includes the proposed restructuring up to a GS17 and a GS18. And I did put in kind of a not to exceed for those reclass proposals. The generalist would be at that second quartile below midpoint. And then the senior generalist would be, I'm asking to go above midpoint, but not beyond that fourth quartile just to recognize the, you know, 30 years of service in, in HR role as well as the professional certifications that that person holds similar to my own, so. And then that's really where that 22%. It's previously was 8%. To do the restructuring would be an additional 8%. To include the intern would be an additional 6%, totaling that to 22% increase. And then you see the increase. Obviously, the, the training is really all I'm, is what I focused on, increasing that by 13,000. I also included dues and memberships as that's been higher with the three staff having a credentials and a SHRM and, and having memberships that we have to have individually as opposed to just one person and sharing a password, because that's not, that's frowned upon. And, and then the remainder has stayed the same.
And then the personnel summary, you can see that, I just put that on here with the changes in the titles. And then we will switch to civil service budget that Amanda also serves.
Okay, so I think we, Michelle had taken out the salaries as, because they haven't been budgeted because it's a wash, basically. You know, if I, if I have a entrance testing or promotional testing, I just code my time to civil service, but we, in the past, I think had budgeted about 100 hours. I don't come anywhere close to that. As since we've transitioned to hiring more civilian detention officers in the jail, we've had a less demand for holding deputy entrance exams. So in this budget, as you guys know, this is, it's a very small budget. Sometimes we spend it. Sometimes we spend a little, sometimes we spend. spend a lot. It just depends on the number of tests that we have. And we will be having a spring test, entrance exam, as well as a promotional test, because those certified lists will be expiring. So I anticipate that we'll see that a change here, or see that the expenses will kind of go up by the end of the fiscal year. But I'm not proposing any changes here.
Doesn't sound like there's any questions or discussion regarding civil service, obviously.
Nope, no questions here.
Nope. None. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Michelle. So I think we're ready to move on to building maintenance.
Thank you. I'm going to log off. Thank you, everyone. And I will follow up with some of those requests.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda.
Okay. Good morning, Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. I guess I wanted to start off by saying a big thank you to my staff for this year, particularly Carol has brought just a vast amount of experience and knowledge and to our department, especially with this budget process. She has taught me a few, quite a few new things to, ways to, to better review expenses and different reports that she's learned throughout her career. Some of the old methods that I used, she has definitely made a, made an improvement throughout our, our department. So, and our staff, our staff, we've got a wonderful staff that has played a big part in the budget as well, just by, by keeping us in tune to the various facilities and, and their needs. So just wanted to start off by saying thank you. So I don't have a fancy PowerPoint, unfortunately. So we'll just go right into the, the accounts here. So the first thing I wanted to, and Michelle, you kind of alluded to this too, but I do want to just mention it again, that before everybody falls off their chair, once they see, see these numbers, keep in mind that this year is a little different with regards to what we used to, you know, call capital projects. There's thresholds that were put out there for various items such as land, machinery, equipment, vehicles, building improvements, land improvements, infrastructure and software. So we were asked to incorporate those into our operating budget. So as I go through this, just keep in mind that that is primarily where you see some of these large increases is because those projects are incorporated into the operating budget.
So do you mind if I expand on that a little bit?
Absolutely.
Since you brought that up. So what we're trying to do is a couple of different reasons. For accounting purposes and auditing purposes, only amounts over certain levels need to be capitalized in our financial statements. So to help us do our financial statements more accurately, those are the only types of expenses that we wanted to capture in what I would call the traditional capital accounts that you're more used to seeing. Many of the projects, particularly with building maintenance that Rory works on, they're really maintenance or repairs and maintenance. And those are the projects that you will see the cost being increased in the operating budget because they truly are repair and maintenance, operating type items. So this is a year of a large change with that, but hopefully that will become standardized after this year.
Thank you for explaining that. I was going to say, I think as some of us knew earlier, Tom was going to be unable to listen in after 10 o'clock. So this might be something we need to reiterate, I guess, later too, just to make sure, since it is a change, that we're all reminded of it. So thank you.
I can email out something too.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. So looking at the sheet that Michelle has up there, for starters, I wanted to point out our revenue. You'll see that we have about a $20,000 increase in revenues. An explanation of that is anytime that our department sees increases, for an example, in a contract such as janitorial, waste management contracts, security, anything like that where we'll see an increase, ultimately, we'll see an increase in revenue because we're, we're charging back the percentage of space that's used. So for an example, DHS uses approximately 54% of that building. And so if you can imagine when we're, we're sending out our invoices and we have increases, therefore, the revenue is increasing. So does that make sense for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Salary and benefits, you'll see, we do have 11% increase on that. You know, obviously, we've got our, our yearly salary adjustments that will, that, that impact that. We also have, in our department, we have on-call. And over the last few years here, since the building maintenance has teamed up with Unit 4 Secondary Roads, we've adopted their on-call pay. And we're, we've already surpassed the, we did it in increments. So we, we paid, our, our, our department was making, I want to say $50 a week to be on-call. And the secondary roads had a different pay structure. And so we adopted that pay structure. And currently, we are at the top end of that now, which I believe is $225 per week. And so unfortunately, last year's budget did not account for that, for whatever reason. And so we're, again, I, I want to thank everybody in my department for really thoroughly going through this budget because it was captured this year. As a consequence, we are, that is contributing to the, to the increase in salary and, and benefits, along with overtime. We, we budget approximately 100 hours of overtime per employee. And overtime for us is when they do get called in off shifts, but then also snow removal is a big one. So that's been accounted for as well. So we feel pretty comfortable moving forward on this budget. We feel very, we feel good that we're capturing the true expenses, especially in this particular section. So any questions on that? Okay. Operating expenses, if you look at the, the bottom line here, you'll see we do have about a $200,000 increase in operating expenses, expenses, very substantial. And as I had mentioned, the capital projects that we have put into our operating budget really makes up the majority of that increase. So as we go through this, or as you go through, as we go through capital, just keep in mind, many of those have been incorporated into this operating budget. So actually, $126,000 of that $199 is capital projects that were put back into our operating budget. The other difference is actually made up with the salary and benefits, as I had mentioned, with the on-call and overtime that is now captured under that section. So if you add those two up, that really does make up the difference, or that, that makes up the increase in our operating budget. Any questions on that? Okay. Before I go on, I'm assuming we'll go on to the capitals list here. But before I do that, I just wanted to point out, because Mr. Little had asked, I believe, a couple meetings ago about our solar production. I don't have a fancy report for you yet, I will. But I do want to just make a note that with the Pine Crest facility, our, our total electrical, let me get to the right one here. Our total electrical for that facility for the last fiscal year was $120. I had mentioned, we, we, it's a $10 fee per month. That's an administrative fee that we're charged. Prior to that, you know, we were spending anywhere upwards around 50, a little over $1,000 a year. So that is a pretty substantial savings. The other side of that I wanted to mention is DHS actually, and I don't know if you have that document, I, I didn't really go through that with you, Michelle, but the amortization that DHS has listed out for us, at the end of the day, it's a 20-year, I believe it's a 20-year amortization, but at the end of the day, they'll end up paying for approximately $400,000 of that 750 original costs. So I do believe that is definitely a win for Black Hawk County.
Hey Rory, that's, that's really awesome. And that was a really exciting project to work on. I'm excited to move on to figure out what buildings we can do, do next as technology advances. But I was wondering, so I think that that changes, off the top of my head, I think that was like a, a seven or so year, or I forget what the break even point was. But I was wondering if, when you have a chance, if we could recalculate that, including the, the DHS amortization.
Yeah, absolutely. That will definitely make a significant difference in that. And if I, I believe the Pine Crest facility, when we originally put those numbers together, we had about 11-year payback on that. But factoring in the DHS kickback will, will certainly have an impact. Yes, I will put that together.
And what did we decide about the plantings around? Is that already underway?
I'm sorry, say that again.
We had, at one point, you had talked about working with conservation to do prairie plantings around the solar.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. We actually, last year, conservation came out. They had, I can't remember the, the number of seedlings that they put in, but we actually, I, I have a few pictures of the prairie grass that came up the first year, and it was actually pretty impressive. Typically, according to conservation, it takes a little time for it to really get to its full potential. But we actually had a very, a very good year. And we had, I am not an expert by known means in the types of seeds that were in there, but I can tell you, there was a lot of fun colors. So. And conservation's been great to work with on that. Mike and his crew have been heading up that. And in fact, they came this fall and cut it down for us, which is part of the process of doing that. So it's been a great collaborative effort between us, our departments. And I look forward to, to seeing what the outcome is when this is fully taken, taken effect.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, yep, it is.
Rory, that might be an opportunity, I know, because Mr. Little's not on currently, but also to revisit that at a board meeting at one of your updates perhaps, and then show those pictures, because you did sew the pictures last year, and it was pretty impressive.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I do think we need to really set some time aside to highlight the solar projects and all, including all seven facilities, because it really is, it was really a successful endeavor by the county. And so I think that is definitely worthy of highlighting. So we will put, we'll put something together. Yeah.
Thank you.
So before I go on to my list of, of projects, was there any other questions with the operating as, as you go through? Like, for an example, if you look at the training and education, we do have an increase on that of $3,300. Michelle and I have been kind of going back and forth on that. What that is, is primarily our safety coordinator's position. We've got some continuing education that we would like for this position to take. And really, we're, you know, with us just getting our feet wet with this position, there's, there is, that, that amount, I, I pulled that amount out just to kind of get us started. I don't know, moving forward, what the next years will look like. But after, you know, this position gets more familiar with our facilities and our staff, you know, that, that amount could change. But I, I felt that this was a good starting point. And by, by the way, that, that position, it, it's, it's been really exciting. The, you know, Brad, that's, that's in that position, has been doing a great job. And we're really looking forward to, there again, the benefits that we're going to see by, by having this position in place. You know, we're already seeing huge improvements. We're seeing in, in communication, communication amongst facilities, emergency management trainings and those types of things. We're just, we couldn't be more pleased. So.
Thank you for, I was going to say, thank you for asking for the questions. I was going to say, but as you know, this is really the first time in this format, we've seen the budget. So I think it's helpful, any of those areas that you think are particularly important or something worth noting to us, just to point those out for us, if you would.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. I'll go down through this real quick here. Again, the training, that's why I wanted to go to that one. As you look through these line items, let's pull up the capital equipment improvements request form. And, and I'll kind of explain how that relates to our operating. Okay. So you'll see the second column there, operating, those amounts, those are the amounts that have been inputted into the operating budget. So when you see an item like, let's take audio visual, for an example, it's up 1,300%. That's a huge number. But if you look over at, at the operating portion, you'll see that, you know, there was $3,000, let me see, security. I believe there's a couple of cameras that we have in there for $6,000. That, that would be why you're seeing that increase in the percentage in the operating budget. So I just wanted to be clear about that. So let's just start at the top. Fire alarm panel here at the courthouse. We did have $10,000 budgeted for this fiscal year, because at the time when I budgeted for that, we, we were under the impression that we had a specific part within the panel that needed to be replaced. As we dove a little deeper into that panel, it became like an old pickup truck and just started with various parts going bad. And it was a recommendation of a few different companies that we've, we've hit the end of this useful life for this system. And so this would be a whole new fire alarm panel and all associated equipment that goes along with that. So field devices, whether it's heat detectors, smoke detectors, pole stations, what have you. So that would be for a whole new system. X-ray machine, walk-through metal detector. Our current system down there, I believe, was purchased in, one second here. It's like 2012. It's currently working. We're, we're currently not experiencing any issues with it, but it has exceeded what Rapid Scan would consider its end of its useful life. So to be proactive, we did put in there for a new system. I did want to mention also, though, when I looked at costing out this new system, what I tried to focus on was a, a system that would help improve our security officers on how they function down there. So for an example, the existing system has a screen behind them, right? So they're letting people into the courthouse. If they're not physically standing there, looking at that screen, the potential of something going the potential of something going by is, is there. And so with this new system, there's some new technology which would alert the officer in the event, other than just having to stare at that monitor. So that's a little bit of the rationale behind both the x-ray machine and the walk-through metal detector. Any questions on those two items? Washer and dryer at the jail, those units over there were put in in 2007. As you can imagine, with 272 people in that facility doing laundry every day, those units are very important to the functionality of that facility, and we have seen an uptick in, in repairs to those units. And so that is just, again, being proactive and changing them out. Salt and sand spreader, that is, if you imagine, if you've seen our trucks out there, that goes into the back of the truck, it is just that, it's a salt and sand spreader. We have, currently, we have two. The one that we're looking at replacing is over 10 years old. We'd like to keep that unit as a backup, but it's, we feel it's just not reliable. And if we go down a sander, we really do feel that, that impact with our parking lot. So that's just keeping our fleet up to date and in good working order. Disregard the carpet on third floor for this year. I actually had meant to have that on my long-term plan. The one-ton pickup truck with a plow mount, actually had that on last year's budget. As you, as you know, with supply chain issues and vehicles, you know, this was a pretty rough year. So we're, we're going to put it on there again for, for next fiscal year and hope that we'll have better chances and get better pricing to get our, our fleet. What you'll see in the long-term plan is, we want to start cycling out our vehicles. Every year, we want to pick one vehicle and, and get that updated, so. With us, it's a little different, maybe than other departments. This particular vehicle that we've earmarked to be replaced actually only has about 39,000 miles on it. But they're very hard miles, and, and the pickup itself has quite a bit of physical issues with it. For an example, the tail, the, the box is very rusty, getting to the point where it could almost be considered unsafe, the frame of the unit itself. And, and that's partly due to our, the way we use our pickups with the salt and sand spreaders that go in the back of them. We've done many things throughout the years to try to help prevent that. We've put in stainless steel beds, liners in them to try to keep the salt and sand from, sand from attacking the vehicle, but sometimes you just, no matter what you do, it's just nature, so. Patio and sidewalk for Pinecrest, Yolando kind of talked to that a little bit the other day. That's going on the backside of the VA department, pretty self-explanatory. Main entry door replacements at Pinecrest. The, we've, we've seen a large uptick in repairs to those main entry doors. They're just physically getting worn out. We need to replace them. The big one here, employee parking lot resurfacing. It says employee parking lot resurfacing, but it's actually the courthouse main lot, the employee lot, the main jail parking lot would all be resurfaced. HVAC control upgrades, that's primarily software with a little bit of hardware upgrades to the head-end system at Pinecrest. That's just keeping up, keeping up with the version that we have there. You know, some of these, I know that there's been frustrations over the years because vendors will come and say, "We can't support your system anymore unless you upgrade, you know, your version of software." So it's partly that, and it's partly some of the field devices have just, have gotten to the point where we're starting to get quite a few random error messages on our systems. So we, we know we've kind of hit the end of its useful life. Emergency stair replacement at Pinecrest. Got some metal stairs, or actually, concrete stairs, sorry. Over on the windy walk path going up to the building, and the concrete has just degraded to the point where it's creating some unsafe situations. So we're looking at putting in galvanized steel replacement stairs. Repainting the whole attorney's department in the basement, that came as a request. I know Brian will be presenting his budget, and he'll be presenting some new furniture. We would kind of work hand-in-hand with Brian and his department, but we would be essentially just trying to, you know, improve that area.
Good.
Yep. Directory at the courthouse, we have been working with a company. It's the same company that jail is currently using. If you go over to the jail's main lobby, they have a monitor that you'll see right when you walk in. That's what we're looking at here, and I know we've talked about this now for several years, but working with our, our current IT department and this system, we really feel that this is the, the right way to go, to provide us a digital directory along with showcasing our solar production and really kind of putting that information out there for the public to see as they come in. And so we are excited about that. And then we are actually trying to talk the court administration into going this route as well, because currently they tape their court schedules on the wall, and if they went this route, they could have a screen, and it could be put up there digitally and just easier to manage. So we are working with the court administration on this one, too. Cafeteria remodel. This is actually something that our staff, we've, we've been talking about for quite some time, but what we would like to do is turn our cafeteria into an employee break room. And so we would like to go in, demo, demo the existing area, get rid of the kitchen equipment in there, possibly put some additional tables, redo the flooring, repaint, and really just have a place for our employees to be able to go, get out of their department, and have a, have a break area. So that's, that's what that is. Does any of you have any questions on that particular item? I know we've tossed this cafeteria idea around for quite some time, but we felt that this would be a good way to utilize that area.
That sounds like a good utilization of that space.
Yeah. And then ultimately, my goal, and there's going to be a lot of probably department heads that may not like me for this, but my ultimate goal would be to start eliminating some of the makeshift break rooms throughout the building. For an example, you know, you have a lot of refrigerators, microwaves, toasters, coffee makers, we wouldn't be too concerned about, but, you know, if we can get all of these items in one location, and, you know, that would buy some of these departments some additional space, too. But that's, that's kind of our, our goal as we get this up and running.
Rory, were you thinking of something, you know, at one time you were talking about different vending machines and things like that available to staff because of, if the cafeteria didn't work, but this is just strictly the renovation of the space?
It is. No vending machines were put into this, or factored into this. This would just be a space for the employee to go in and heat something up in a microwave, sit down at a table, possibly with some other employees from another department, and just be able to, you know, have a common space for employees to be able to go.
Great. And we have the tables and chairs and things to do it right now, correct?
Yeah, we can definitely get started, and then as we get going, if we feel we need to do something different, we can, we can certainly change that. I do propose putting a key fob on this door, though, so it does remain for employees only, to keep.
Good idea.
Yeah, it would be strictly an employee break room.
Otherwise, we'd probably have a few jurors join us.
It's very possible, yeah. Nothing against them, it's just, you know, you got to imagine we'll have some refrigerators in there, and I haven't really worked through how that's going to look yet, but, you know, if people feel comfortable enough to put their items in a refrigerator, kind of the honor system that you don't go in and steal somebody's sandwich. But if we start allowing public in there, then it's, then it's off limits. I mean, it's, it's going to be opened up to a lot of people.
Yeah, no, thanks. Yeah, that's great.
Security alarm replacement at Pinecrest. This is actually the burglar alarm that's currently over there. It's, it's, right now, it is actually not working. It's failed on us. We've had companies come in and take a look at it. It's a fairly antiquated system. So this is just replacing that, that security alarm. Sidewalk repairs, every year, the city of Waterloo goes through looking at various areas of town, and Pinecrest did get picked this year. There are a couple of tripping hazards over there that need to be addressed. Water supply, this is actually a pressure relief valve over at the jail. A pretty substantial repair. Gutter, downspout repair, caulking, tuck pointing. All of these contribute to just keeping the exterior of the building up to snuff. If you've been up to the fifth floor at Pinecrest lately, you know, there are areas over there where you'll see the walls might be bubbling out. We're contributing that to potential tuck pointing and more so caulking around the windows and that type of thing. And so this would be something we would outsource because it is on the fifth floor of Pinecrest, and, and I don't want my guys shimmying down that building, so. HVAC upgrades, that is actually on there. You'll be seeing an ARPA request, but that was actually extracted out of the facility space assessment. So disregard that one for, for this process. Electrical service replacement, that was extracted also out of the facility space assessment, but it even goes a little further than that. This is something that we've been looking at now for the last couple of years. In fact, it was on the long-term plan. But our existing electrical service here at the courthouse is original to the building. And although it is currently working, if we were to have a failure, it is getting harder and harder to find replacement breakers and those types of things for that system. This building, when it was constructed, you know, it was constructed with typewriters in mind. And some departments struggle with receptacle locations where they're placed. So we'd be taking a full sweep through this facility and looking at replacing breaker panels and possibly locations of receptacles and possibly eliminating some of the floor receptacles that people are tripping on all the time. And so this is just, just a house maintenance, getting our facility up to date. Any questions on that one? That is a pretty big one.
No, not on that one. I was just going to say, just on the one where you talked about the 1.4, and you meant, it says there the ARPA request needed, so that's not something that's been submitted? That's just one you're thinking about? Okay.
One we're thinking about, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Just to let you know, we are thinking.
Yeah, no, I know that. Thanks.
It does seem like, things like the electrical upgrade, since that's something that only, that would happen again decades from now, rather than a more recent, like, reoccurring cost, that might be something that we can utilize reserves for, as we're, just seeing where everything lands.
Yep, yeah, I, I agree. You know, this, this upgrade would provide many years of, of service for this facility. I can't even imagine, you know, we've gotten 50-plus years on the existing system, so. It is a long-term fix.
And Chris, that's a good point. It's also something I think the boards talked about, too, as far as when we look at that lost revenue category from, you know, the ARPA projects, that that might be something, too, building improvements in different offices and things like that, too, that we'd want to update or remodel. So, yeah, future discussions.
Lawnmower replacement. Our existing lawnmower. I had the date here, but I'm not sure what I did with it. But anyway, it's, we've had this lawnmower in service now for probably about six years. We have one, one person dedicated to mowing our, our grounds. And I want to say our number of acres that combined, and Carol, I know you're in the closet, correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say it's about four or five acres of grounds that we maintain. Nine, that's what I meant to say, yes, nine. Nine acres. So as you can imagine, as this lawnmower that we currently have, as it gets older, if it does go down, it does have a pretty negative impact on us because we are relying on one person to maintain all of this. And we can't really, you know, rely on Secretary Rhodes or Conservation because they're out utilizing their equipment at the same time. So what we're asking for is to replace this lawnmower, but yet keep our existing one as a backup. So it's just enforcing our, our fleet, making us a little bit more reliable. Questions on that? I know lawnmower has been kind of a hot topic in the past, so. Power brush for snow removal. This one here, as a staff, we, we were looking at ways that we can improve our detail work for snow removal. For an example, you know, you get a, you get a rain, you get ice on the sidewalk, we go and we throw a bunch of salt on it and walk away and hope that takes care of it. And nine times out of 10, it does. But there are occasions where, you know, we have had slips, trips, and falls. You know, somebody just happens to hit it at the right time. This would just be an improvement to our fleet to be able to do some more of that detail work on our sidewalks, our heavily trafficked sidewalks. It basically has a power brush on it, so it's a walk-behind system. It's narrow enough that you can really get in and do detail work, break up the ice, bust it up, get rid of it, and hopefully prevent, you know, any of these slips, trips, and falls that we have. So again, just bettering our equipment. This one here, stair railing and door upgrade. This has been a bit of a struggle. This was extracted out of the facility master plan or space assessment. And for half a million dollars, when I first looked at this, I thought they got to be kidding, you know, for stair railing and door upgrade. It goes a little further than that. It actually looks at some ADA issues that we have with this existing facility with regards to our counter heights in the various departments, recorders, assessors, auditors. It does look at our stair railings. Currently, they do not meet current code. It looks at our, our doors within our stairwells. Are they fire-rated? Current code doesn't allow for the steel mesh in the, in the glass. So it's, it's really getting our, our facility up to current code and, and addressing some of the ADA issues that we have. The thing that I kind of struggle with this, though, is it's not a, most of our projects that we do, we, we work with, we work with people, and we try to narrow down a, a number that we feel comfortable with, that we can achieve this project. This is more of a, like an allowance. This is more of, hey, can we have $500,000 to do some of these improvements? And so it's a little different approach, not one that I'm really used to. So I'm going to leave this up to the board with your comfort level, because it is really just a, hopefully not to exceed number, but address these issues. So little, little out of, out of the norm when we, when it comes to projects for us. Any thoughts on that?
What, what all doors are included in this?
It wouldn't be necessarily office doors. It'd primarily be ingress, egress doors, you know, in our stairwells, in our main lobby. Those fire-rated automatic closures, those types of things. Does that make sense, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking through it. Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking through it.
Yeah.
Um, and you said, um, you also mentioned not just stairwings and doors, but there was, um, countertop or counter heights?
Yeah, my conversations with Envision, um, you know, we, we understand that our counters here at the courthouse, um, when it comes to ADA, uh, they are high. Um, what ADA requires us to do is to have a plan in place. And so our plan in place right now, uh, to meet the ADA is for that department to, to actually come around and work with the person, um, out in the hallway. And that's a, that's a plan that, that, that works. Um, it's not ideal. As you can imagine, that puts, uh, the person that's, uh, that's in need, uh, potentially in an awkward position. And so we would like to make this more of an ADA-friendly facility and have a, a drop in the countertop at an appropriate height, uh, that they could come up and do their business rather than, you know, having exceptions needed to be made.
Okay, no, that, that makes sense. So you're, you're looking at having, uh, just one section that, that's of, you know, each countertop that's, uh, better accessible.
Right, right.
Uh, no, I, I like that. I mean, it improves, improves dignity for people seeing services, they don't feel like they have to stick out and, and such.
Right, that's, that's what I was looking for, yep.
Yeah, very definitely. I was gonna say Rory, have you put together or considered, like I say, this being like maybe a step in that, but what the multi-year plan or something to kind of move us in that direction? Cause I think it's been talked about, but we just haven't maybe done that.
Um, it actually, it has been talked about and we have the starting, uh, process and I am going to be leaning, uh, heavily on our new safety coordinator as well. Uh, we're going to be working on this together. Um, there's actual, we have, uh, uh, inspections, uh, for each facility that kind of help guide us through the things to look for. Um, some departments like Conservation, for an example, they kind of took it and ran with it. They've made some definite improvements. Um, and we, we have too, when you, in regards to like the restroom, uh, uh, remodel that we did here at the courthouse, obviously, uh, that was prompted by, uh, the ADA needs that we, that we needed here. Um, but there's, there's much more to do and, uh, I would personally feel more comfortable having this more laid out a little better. Um, as I'd mentioned, uh, you know, a, a half a million dollars to just throw out there towards, towards a project and not really having a, uh, well-thought-out plan. I, I apologize even bringing that to you folks today, but I contemplated, but I do feel that, you know, it would be nice to get something going on, on improving our, our facilities and that is something we will be working on as a plan.
Okay, and it, yeah, because that might be helpful in us as far as when you look at approving a budget, then to see what is planned and do you have, like you say, the staff that would help or are we looking at outsourcing it or how we do it to make those changes and.
Yep.
Couldn't we get it done?
I don't know if, uh, ARPA, this, you know, if there's a way that we could tie this into ARPA somehow also, or, uh, you know, with regards to, uh, separation, uh, that type of thing.
I'd be interested in seeing a questionnaire on that. I will, at the risk of, uh, elongating this meeting, I will tell you that, um, there are changes coming to ARPA that are going to expand uses.
Okay.
ARPA funds and the rules are expected next month. I just learned about this yesterday.
Okay.
They're always changing.
Yep.
Michelle, I have a question in regard to, uh, the late items listed under capital funding request. Are these items, either all of them or, or individually could be, uh, money from reserves could be utilized to accomplish them?
That's certainly an option. Yep, I will be, we'll be looking into that a little bit more about how you might want to approach that. Some, we don't have the full picture of our operating budget yet, so we've got to put that together. But certainly, those are the kind of things I think reserves might make sense to use some of those, yep.
Yes. Yeah, I, we, we definitely want to see us maintain a baseline of capital that's, that's included in the levy every year, but, but some of these large, um, almost, almost once in a generation investments would make a lot of sense.
Thank you, thank you for that feedback, I appreciate it.
Any more, uh, on the, uh, on this 500,000? I know, um, I, you know, like again, we contemplated putting this on the list, I spoke with Michelle and we decided, you know, let's just, let's bring it up to the board and, and see what your thoughts are. Um, you know, if changes are coming to ARPA, I would might, I might propose that, uh, we put this in the same category as the, as the 1.4 million up there on that list and, uh, put an application together and see, see what comes of it. Um, we could take that approach. And, uh, that would allow us, uh, you know, to, to, uh, queue in on a, on a little bit more precise plan as well.
I'll try to nutshell the, uh, changes to you when we're done here.
Okay.
Or the anticipated changes, I should say.
Yeah, that'll be great to know, Mike, so thank you, I was going to say, because that might open a lot of different doors for us as a county, so thanks.
Yeah, it doesn't directly go to this, but it, uh, but it, it'll have reverberations in other, in other areas beyond its direct impact.
Let's see, the last, uh, three items, uh, related to the, the jail, um, a few, uh, I want to say, uh, back in 2012, we did a very large project over there, uh, where we did a epoxy, uh, shower install and, um, I believe there's 36 showers over there and we had a company come in and put epoxy on all of them. And, uh, we're starting to see areas where the epoxy is breaking down. So what this is, is going through and, uh, making those, uh, necessary repairs before they get worse. Um, the overhead door is our loading dock over at the jail and, uh, just over the years, uh, we're starting to see the, the main frame of that door is getting real rusty and, uh, potentially it could turn into a safety issue. Um, security grading for the, uh, pod balcony, um, is what, what it says. It's, uh, it's a perforated steel grading up on the second level, um, between the floor and the, uh, top of the, uh, railing on that balcony, just to provide as a guard. That, uh, that is my list.
Okay, Rory, I had one more question back on the, the stair and railing upgrade. Um, you mentioned that, um, code has gotten away from the, the mesh, uh, glass. Uh, I was just wondering if, if you could explain maybe what safety concerns are or hazard concerns are with that?
I can't right now, Chris, because I just learned that yesterday when I spoke with Envision. And so I plan on looking into that too, because I, I found it quite interesting, but it's, it's not the first time that I've heard that, so I need to look that code up and see how that's written.
Okay, thanks.
Do we, do we have any other questions?
Nope.
Of Rory or of you, does it sound like?
No. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Any comments? I was gonna say, Michelle, are there any comments you want to make on either or both budgets or budget process or?
I think we, we went through both of those budgets in pretty good detail. Um, as I mentioned a little earlier, we will be talking more about capital and potential ways to fund it, because we've got several. We, we know we have ARPA lost revenue and reserves and more traditional ways, operating budget and bonding. So, um, we'll be looking at that overall picture a little later and we, we will have, I think, quite a few departments ready to present next week, so we're, we're moving along with budget things.
Great. Well, I want to thank everyone, like I say, for being able to accommodate and work through this process, which obviously I think all of us would have preferred to be there in person, but for various reasons, uh, that didn't happen, but, uh, this I thought came off better than I expected, so thanks to all for, I think as well as it worked.
Good work, everyone.
Yeah. If no further discussion or questions or comments, I guess I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Meeting is adjourned, thank you again.